There's no way I was gonna stay at home. No way. I'd do it, man. Oh, first rocket.
Yeah, should I be ready to go?
Um, no.
No, not quite.
Well, you can say there.
You can say, yeah.
Oh, so I said, should I be ready to go?
Oh, oh.
I should.
Always ready. Okay, it is twelve.
Somebody else's comment?
Paul, is that you?
Yeah.
Okay, I think you just had a follow up.
Looks like it, yeah.
He's looking good, though. He's looking good, though.
We can hear you, Jackie. Yep, we can see you. All right.
Time?
Yeah.
Okay, I call this meeting in order for the purpose of a special meeting to discuss the recommendations regarding COVID-19. And these first groups are gonna discuss distance learning updates from your department. So, Laura, you're first.
It's been very, very busy out in our schools and lots of learning has taken place, not just for our students, but also for our staff members. So, currently lesson plans have been sent out weekly, so this is the second week of that. They'll have a learning intention and activities for day, every day for reading, writing, and math. A lot of our teachers have moved online, more than, I was just, I'm so impressed with how many have moved online. They're recording themselves, they're presenting lessons. We've received many, and I've shared with Dr. Howell, some of the ones that have been shared with me on teachers, teaching to the camera from their living rooms and really reaching out. I mean, it's so personal, you know, they've missed their students and that just is so communicated through those, those lessons that they're presenting. We still have packets going out, so there's kind of a blended model that's happening, especially in our kindergarten through second grade. But I think that's very, very appropriate, so they might receive a, the teacher might teach, be teaching a lesson. She's maybe recorded or he recorded it on YouTube or through Google Meet or Seesaw. They've used several different platforms and then students will have activities to follow up with. But that's really important that they have those where they're paper pencil activities. We still want our learners, especially our young ones, to be developing their fine motor skills. If it's all online, we're not doing that. So, you know, there is that blended learning component, especially at those lower grade levels. More at the third, fourth, and fifth grade, they're using Google Classroom and students are responding through Google Classroom. But I think teachers have really, some of them have said they've stepped outside of their comfort zone, you know, they're recording themselves. They're going places that they didn't think that they would be, you know. If we'd rolled this out and thought about rolling that out, rolling it out, it probably would have taken us, we would have studied it. It would have taken us a year or two to roll it all out to be where we are, but they have really gone over and above. And then in our buildings, the paras have, they've also done a lot of things too. They're recording themselves, reading stories, they're reading, you know, reading to kids, they're reaching out and making phone calls in cases where that is needed, making packets for our learners to go out every week. So, lots and lots has been taking place. And you just see evidence over and over of how important the relationships are. You, when, when they've sent me, the principals have sent me emails with video recordings that they've sent out to their, to their learners. And, I mean, I sit there and cry because it's, they really do care about, about their learners and they miss them and their learners miss them too. So, we just, this happened at a time in the year when we had developed those relationships and I think that's why we're able to be where we are. It's because we have those relationships that are really strong and you can see how strong they are. Our learners miss their teachers and the teachers miss their learners. So, over and over, it's been really positive. Some of the things that we've learned probably, or we didn't know how internet, how many had internet. And so I asked the principals to give me an estimate and it was between three and 10% of our learners who did not have internet at home, which was much low, that, that was a lower amount than I thought. One school estimated about 20%, but all of the others were in the three to 10%. The number of no contacts last week for thirteen elementary schools and then Lincoln also, and they had start, they had only eight of our learners that there was no contact last week. So, I think that's pretty darn amazing, you know, given.
What do we do about that?
We're just keeping.
Are you sure they're there or?
No, we're not and, but we, we just had no, you know, they didn't come to pick up a packet or we reached out by phone. So, that was such a low number, I thought there would be far more than that, that we were not able to get, get hold of, but only eight across there. And so they continue to reach out to them. So, we have plans in place so that, you know, it goes to the next level, the counselor will reach out, the community resource workers continue to reach out. And some have just chosen to not do school right now, you know? Or some of them, we've heard stories about some of them that mom might have to work and so families have had, the children have had to go to a family member outside of our area so that they could be staying with them and have someplace to go because mom's working, has to work, daycares are closed. And so there are, you know, those kinds of situations also. We had to deliver ninety packets last week, so what happened is if, if we didn't, the packets weren't picked up last week. So, we had every learner go to the school, the parents go to the school and so there were about ninety that needed to be delivered. So, you know, they went out in mass, you know, the community resource workers, the teachers, the principals, whoever was available. Some of our paraprofessionals would go out and would deliver those packets and they delivered about ninety of them. They said there are fewer this week as we move to more online, especially for those upper grades. Fewer of them are, are being delivered. Some of the positives, you know, of course, the teachers are working hard and they're doing phenomenal things and not just the teachers, the paraprofessionals, the administrators. They're putting in lots of hours in order to make this, to move this quickly to something that's so new. They've used YouTube, they've used Google Classroom, they've used Google Meet, they've used Seesaw, Dojo, several different platforms there in order to communicate with parents. And so we're seeing that we're communicating in new ways and I think that's a real lesson that we need to be taking away from this. Is that, you know, the, the bulletin going home every week or, you know, a paper in the, in the child's backpack may not be the way that we communicate and see as our best means of communication. We'll have a much broader way to communicate with parents and we absolutely need to capitalize on that and I know that we will. We were still able to continue like with counseling, our counselors reaching out to, you know, our learners that we were concerned with and our families that might need some extra support, our community resource workers delivering food. Those are all positives that are happening. We saw where morning announcements and routines were still being continued and so we have one in particular from Indian Hills. And Mrs. Pixton, every morning does a, a morning announcement. So, she continued with the morning announcement and this neighborhood had taken it upon themselves with, to practice social distancing, but they had the flag out there in their little cul-de-sac and the kids were saying the Pledge of Allegiance. So, some routines that were still taking place. There are lots of words of encouragement that went out from our schools, so not just lessons, we know that that's, that's not enough. I mean, it's, it's important and it's what we're about is learning, but those words of encouragement and those relationships, to continue to build those are what are key to our success of our schools. And so it's what makes us different from just regular online learning. It's those relationships that have been built in a face-to-face, you know, environment. And so we're still continuing those and those are definitely some positives there. There've even been parades in some neighborhoods, Sarinhas had some parades, Washington's had parades. So, those are positive ways too and just going around to wave at students in their homes. Some of the challenges that we're facing are the unequal support at home. You know, sometimes we have parents that are home with their learners and they're able to, you maybe replicate a school day and others that the parents might be working in their, living room. and others that the parents might be working in their limited childcare, they're having to go, you know, someplace else during the day or maybe the parents aren't understanding how to, how to support them. So, we do worry that there's unequal support at home. And so, that, that's one of our challenges that we face. Another challenge is our assessment of learning, you know, we're, we're used to wandering the classroom and, and, um, asking questions of our learners and it's much easier, you know, you can do this face-to-face. So, how are we assessing learners is, is some new learning that we're having to take, having to think about. And that we do, we've seen examples of overwhelmed parents where if you have multiple students at, in their home that are, they're having to sit with and help, then that, that is, that's a challenge for parents. Um, and it has taken, um, time for our teachers, time for our families and those are all some, some challenges that we're, you know, that we're working for. Um, we, some of our schools have done feedback surveys, so they've reached out to the parents through a Google, Google survey and said, "How, how is the workload? Is it just right? Is it too much? Is it not enough?" And so, we're trying to adjust that and be listening and communicating with parents so that we can get this down because we're definitely learning in this whole journey. So then Head Start has continued also with, um, with their remote learning and they're doing, um, packets are going out to about twenty percent of our learners are having the bus driver or food service be delivering those packets to families and they're also delivering food. So, they had about twenty percent of their families that were not able to pick up food in the parks and so they're, they're using their bus drivers and their buses in order to deliver them to those homes. Our backpack deliveries are still continuing, we had a reduced number of backpacks this month, but we had some carryover from before, so we've been able to still distribute those out. We don't know what's going to happen in May, we'll be watching that, but we should be able to come up with our same amount of backpacks throughout this month anyway and we're able to get those out. I'll also give a Twenty First Century Grant, um, we got it, we got the grant. And so, it was the, uh, the grant that would be for the Green Acres, Tendoy area, uh, Wilcox and Tahie after-school programs and that's the one where we're going to be doing, uh, a preschool and looking at that in that Green Acres, Tendoy area and offering a preschool, um, it'll be during the day which we can do, opportunity for those families. So, we're, we're very excited to be, uh, you know, having a new challenge there in looking at how we can make a difference in our preschool learners. They, they are also contacting parents, they're still working in the Twenty First Century After School Program. They're contacting parents to determine what level of support that they need. They're working professional development online, they've set up pen pals so that they can be working on writing. Um, they have take-home kits in STEM and art that they're, that they're able to give to families for extra extensions. They're offering tutoring and, um, if they return, if, if the school district returns this year, then they, they'll have to provide a summer program. If the school district does, continues with remote learning throughout the year, then the resources there for the summer learning program can be reallocated. So, there's elementary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, we have a question.
Okay.
Accountability.
That's, uh, so, uh, Mrs. Pettit and I had that discussion this morning. That in, ends up being one of our challenges, um, is exactly, it, because it's coming back unequally and so that's something that we're going to continue our discussions on. So, we're doing the best that we can there. I think that's probably, it's easier to deliver the instruction than it is to, um, once it goes out, then you don't really know exactly what's happening there. So, we're working on it, it continues to be on our, on our radar. I would say it's probably our challenge at this point. Last week, our challenge was trying to figure out how to deliver the instruction and remotely and this week, our challenge is, um, how do we assess that learning? And you could see that I listed it on there, so, you know, we're doing the best we can at this point and we're learning and we're growing in that area.
For secondary, I'm so proud of our, our staff. They're just above and beyond, um, what we've asked them to do to, to get learning to keep, continue on. Um, I have several teachers that have emailed and said, "Working harder now than I have in the last four years," um, redoing everything that I've done so that it works online. Um, right now, we have about ten percent of our kids that are working offline in packets and, um, Amy Prescott and Keith Ottley have been working on how, um, kids can take a Chromebook to a place where there is internet in our, like, New Horizons parking lot or ISU's parking lot and download all of their, um, Google documents onto their Chromebook and then take it home and work offline. Um, and we're working currently on how to get the videos that the teachers have, um, made of their teaching to be able to download those onto a thumb drive so that they can take them home and work offline if they need to. So, right now, we're doing about ten percent paper packets, but my guess is in the next week to two weeks, that will drop immediately and people will be checking out a few more Chromebooks to get, um, to work online. Um, if they're coming into school to pick up a packet, they can come into school, sit in the parking lot, upload, download and take it home and work on it, so, um, we're working on that. Um, our biggest challenge so far has been our hands-on classes and our teachers have just been phenomenally creative on how they've worked that. Um, I will tell you that the small engines class up at Highland, um, literally the small engines got put in, um, garbage bags with their toolbox in the garbage bag and their name put on it and sat outside in the classroom and sat overnight and then the kids came in by and picked them up and Jack Garrett is now doing video, um, teaching, "Okay, we're gonna do this with your, with your small engine next, let's try this." And he's, um, just phenomenal ways that we're going about, um, keeping those CTE classes moving forward. Um, the counselors have, um, come up with a way that the kids can, um, the teachers are attaching it to their Google Classroom. They can click on, "I need a counseling session," um, and it goes on a, um, large Google Doc and the counselors are going in and calling those kids individually and meeting their needs for counseling as they go and then making a checkmark and the next one calls the next one, next one calls. So, within, um, usually that day, but for sure within twenty-four hours, the counselors are calling those kids back and getting them their answers as fast as they possibly can, keeping those relationships, um, as close as we can get them. Um, I will tell you that, uh, it has just been phenomenal, the amount of work that's, that's gone on in the last week and a half. Um, we passed out Chromebooks a week ago and everything changed, so, um, fantastic. Um, all of our teachers in secondary are keeping office hours, um, and kids, it's usually a Google Classroom or Google Meet and the kids can get on and get their questions answered immediately. Um, if not, we have turned on all the, um, emails for, uh, our Gmail's here in the district and they are one-way Gmail, so our teachers can email to the kids and the kids can email directly back to the teachers, but they, it doesn't go out this way. So, it's a very secure communication, um, back and forth for the teachers and kids, uh, and they're utilizing that significantly. So, answering questions late in the night.
Jackie, I have a question. I've heard some concerns from students in CTE courses who are concerned about taking tests they need to do to pass as well so they can go on next year and things like that. Can you address any of those type cycles concerns?
So, some of those tests that they have to take, um, to continue, they've, they've postponed most of those tests for CTE and/or for national certification. If, um, Advanced Opportunities Moneys has paid for those, that has, that deadline has been extended through December, so they can take those tests later this summer or early in the fall next year to continue on with their programs, so.
And so, they, they still should be able to finish up the certification or whatever it, they call it?
Yes, correct.
Or if they're like going to be seniors next year or whatever, or this year?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Crainer, I might add to that and Mrs. Pettit doesn't even know this yet because I received a, um, a draft guideline just before coming into this meeting and it's in regard to, uh, a reentry of schools. And so, the, the draft proposes that some exceptions to a soft closure might include staff and student needs as a case-by-case basis. And in fact, Mrs. Pettit and I have already talked about the welding program.
Let me tell them about that.
Yeah, and so, uh, we want to make sure that we're meeting those needs for the, the certifications of our seniors and it looks like this reentry, now, the state board's not taking any action on this. Again, this is just a draft. And so, once that's put into place, then we will be able to move forward, I think, very easily with, on the case-to-case basis, taking appropriate protocols for, you know, social distancing, disinfecting, sanitation, those sort of things.
So, I, I will tell you for our welding program, we had, um, ten seniors that needed to finish, they were in the top-level welding class and welding is the only class we could not figure out how to do online. You can't send a welder home and have them, so, um, I talked with Rhonda and I talked with Jack Garrett, who is the instructor and he said they, they all have their own PPE that they wear under their own mask. They all have inside gloves that go on inside, they, they don't share anything. So, they have two sets of gloves, two sets of PPE, their stations are six-foot stations as it is. Um, and so, uh, Dr. Howell and I talked about it and said, "You can run, have those kids come up in small groups, um, and run your welding class, um, with, uh, that, just those seniors until such time as they can finish the, um, material that you need to finish with them or we have community spread in Pocatello. If we have community spread, it's done, but until that time, with written parent permission, they can come up and you may work with them." And so, he, his plan was to have, um, five come up and work for three to four hours and, instead of that hour, um, or two hours and get as much as they can get done as quickly as he can with them so that they can finish that because all of those seniors, as soon as they finish that class, can go out and work in shops and, and be hired as a welder and take their ASW test at that shop. So, um, juniors can take it again next year, but seniors, we wanted to make sure that they get it and it's the only class we could not figure out how to do online. So, um, with those stipulations, he is running very small groups of just seniors through that senior-level welding class, so.
What about our E and D courses and like higher, I mean, E and D and those types of things?
So, he is running those all online right now. They have tests that they need to come in and take at the end of the class and based on the, the relaxations of that social distancing, um, we've talked with him about having one child come in at a time. Um, he can have them test, he can stand back and watch them, sterilize everything when they're done, go out and have the next student come in. So, it would, again, it would be a one-at-a-time on a case-by-case basis to come in and take those tests.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you say all the teachers are, uh, on normal hours?
All the teachers are keeping office hours. So, they're working all day, but they're answering emails throughout the day, but if a student needs to talk specifically to a teacher face-to-face as best they can, um, they're keeping office hours for Google Classroom or Google Meet. So, like what we're doing here, they'll be sitting at a Google Meet and the kids can sign in and out as they need to, "Hey, I need this question answered" or, "Hey, I need that question answered." Um, and they are keeping a contact log of how often they're talking to kids. And it, it's a minimum of, um, twice a week, two-way contact. So, it can't just be, "I sent out stuff and never heard from them." So, they have to talk with them two-way. Um, we've talked about attendance, if, um, there is no, we put it as proof of life. If we can't, if, if we can't get a hold of a child, there is no, we have tried, um, phones, we have tried home visits, we have tried, um, Google Classroom, Google Meets, emails, anything. If we can't, if we've not, have, have no contact with that child whatsoever, then they are marked absent for that whole week and we will send them notification that they've been marked absent for that whole week. Um, we had one student at Century last week that we had no contact with whatsoever and came in yesterday and he went, "Oh, my gosh, I, I just didn't, I didn't pick up my packet last week, I need my packet for last week also." And that was after, uh, you know, several phone calls and then they finally sent a home visit out and said, "Are you here?" "Well, yeah, get in and pick your packet up." So, um, about, um, there's about four or five at each school that they've gotten no contact with whatsoever and they've done, like I said, phone calls, emails, home visits, they're just not around at the moment, so.
Okay, so my question is if they hear about accountability and, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm worried about some kids just thinking they don't have to do anything and they're just, oh, man, they're passing, knowing into, you know, the next, the next year and, and so, can you address that a little bit?
That is our challenge right now. Um, we have, um, several kids that are, are doing a great job with their, with their online work and their packets and several that are not and we have parents calling in and saying, "I can't get my child on this computer to get him to do any work" and we kind of said, "Well, we've had that same problem with your child in school," but, um, it, it is a challenge, but the teachers are working diligently, um, to, to hold kids accountable for their work and they need to finish the work that's, that's being issued. They have, the teachers have, um, gleaned out the most essential things that need to be learned for this last third of the year and are only sending home just the, 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 the very, very most important things that the kids need to learn and stressing, "This is what you have to get done." So, um, our community needs, um, to know that we have cut to the bare bones what we're sending home.
So, will they be getting graded or any kind of a, a reporting system to these kids about passing failing?
Currently, they are being graded and the teachers are upgrading tho, uh, updating those grades weekly in Infinite Campus and students and parents are encouraged to look on Infinite Campus to see how they're doing on their, on their classes at that time. Yes.
Was there any, is there any general, what, any general feeling from the students about, um, how they're, how they're feeling about this, that down and, uh, and going to school online?
I think it's causing some mental health issues for our students. It's just, it's, it's difficult not to be around their friends. It's difficult not to have that community relationship. The work itself, I think they're fine doing, um, it, it depends on which person you talk to at which minute, um, whether it's too much work and it's overwhelming or it's just the right amount or, um, you know, this is what we do all the time, we're fine with this. Um, so, our schools are trying to fine-tune what's enough and what's not too much work, um, being sent home. It's, it's just a difficult time for everybody.
I would say, Mr. Vitale, just by our nature, teachers over-prepare.
They do.
In everything. And so, you know, even if you had a, a fifty or a seventy-minute lesson, you would probably plan for a seventy to ninety-minute lesson. And so, I would say it's, it's hard for us to gauge just in a week's time, what is, as Mr. Vareken put it in an email yesterday to a parent, uh, uh, the sweet spot, you know, on a bat or a tennis racket or whatever it happens to be. You're just trying to find that, that Goldilocks principle of what's just right. And so, I, I think we can continue to monitor that. We'll have a, a better idea really after this week, I would say, going into the first part of next week, what is that, that just right amount, yeah. So, and, and our, our principals could definitely, you know, gauge or try to provide some feedback to you at our next meeting in regard to what the students say because maybe we haven't done as good of a job in soliciting that feedback as what we have from our instructional staff.
I know the kid, the, the teachers over-prepared for last week, um, sent home, in some cases entirely too much. Expected it should just be the same as what they could do in their classroom and, and it was way too much. And so, um, all the administrators met with their teachers throughout the week last week and said, you know, "Pick the most important items and send that. You don't need to be sending anything extra, just the most important stuff." So, I know our teachers revamped a bunch of their lessons this week and sent home what they felt was the most important. Um, but again, it's, it's checking. But again, it's, it's check and, check and change, and check and change each week. So we'll continue on.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. David?
Good afternoon. So much of the wonderful and uplifting things that Mrs. Pettit and Mrs. Crane shared are being mirrored in our special education world. I'm proud to say that of our 1,500 students who are receiving special education services, approximately 20 of them have opted to discontinue services, which is less than 1% of our total population. I figured at one point that would be a little bit higher. But as our folks have reached out to our families and have stressed the importance of staying connected to our families and their students, that that number continues to be a pretty low number. Most of those students are learners in our special population programs, our extended resource room programs, our developmental learning programs, where there's an element of medical fragility or difficulty with just implementing learning packets or learning tubs or online learning resources in the home setting for students who are more moderate to severe in their disabilities. So I'm pleased to say that that number is holding steady at, at less than 1%. We have approximately 300 special education items that need to be completed from the time we shut down to the end of the school year. Those include individual education plan meetings, annual reviews, eligibility determinations and so forth. And one of the snags that we've kind of found is how to get what we call a legally-composed IEP team meeting together in this soft closure predicament that we're in. And that requires an administrator, that requires a general education teacher, that requires an ancillary personnel if need be. So we're struggling to find an adequate manner to do that consistently across our, our programs. Much of it is based upon parents' availability, connectivity in the home, communication and such. So, so that, that is a challenge that we continue to work on. And fortunately, although the federal folks have not waived requirements for those kinds of specifications, the State Department of Education has given us some latitude into how we can go about getting signatures, documents signed, having meetings, teleconference, remote kinds of meetings. So we're, we're still kind of struggling to find the sweet spot as to what works best for most of our folks. Again, a lot of it, you know, it's the old phone-call method and, you know, "Let's send it home in the mail," or "Can we fax it to you? Can you sign it? Can you send it back?" Unfortunately, we still have to hold tight to some of those procedures. So we're, we're working on that. Another little snag that we're up against is extended school year, which is a program that is required for our students who are more moderate to severe in their disabilities and who require ongoing services throughout the summer months. We had originally planned for a start date of June 8th. Not sure what that's going to look like. We usually have six weeks of fairly intensive learning. It's kind of combined with kind of a day camp feel to it for upwards of 40 of our, of our more severely disabled students. We're concerned if we're going to be able to pull that off in a live model or if we're going to be held to some kind of a distance model. Now, I seriously doubt that they will waive that requirement as it's spelled out in law. So we're, we're kind of wrestling with how we might go about doing that, how we, how we can get our learners with those kinds of needs appropriately programmed for their extended school year experience. So that, that's yet to come. We're having regular communication with, with all of our special ed folks and our ancillary people, upwards of about 100 folks every week that myself and our teacher consultant, Lauren Johnson, meets with in a Google Meets format. So we're, we're staying up, up to speed with what their needs are. They are finding that, as is expected, our kids truly miss coming to school, right? And some of the learning difficulties that they have had in the classroom, parents are seeing that at home, obviously. So it comes as no surprise that many of our classroom teachers are getting phone calls from parents saying, "Gosh, what can you do to help me motivate my, my child here to get busy on his, on his assignment?" And sure enough, the classroom teacher gets on the phone with the student. We have one teacher out there who really has gone above and beyond. And she has daily contact with her students and at least three times weekly with the parent of her caseload. And she says these kids just miss being around other kids, and they miss the connection that comes with being at school and so forth. When, when we chatted earlier, one of my concerns was, of course, what this isolation might do to some of our students who are predisposed in their emotional behavioral health. And, and we have 50 to 70 of those kids at our, at our secondary schools that struggle with what we call an emotional behavioral disorder. And, and as, as our folks are reaching out to those learners and having contact via FaceTime quite often, or an email, or a text message even, or even as rudimentary as knocking on the door, standing back on the curb and trying to have some conversation on the porch as to how things are going. They report that they're bored, of course, obviously bored. And for some of those kids who, whose home lives may not be, you know, the best it can be, they're, they're struggling with coping, right? How, how can I cope with the difficulties that we're struggling with here? And of course, stress is, in the, the dynamics of the family living situation in many of these homes is amplified, as you would imagine, with this closure. So a lot of our adaptive ed counselors are school social workers, and the behavior technicians that they supervise are working diligently on, if nothing else, staying connected and giving these kids hope that this will pass and we will be back in school at some point. And just emphasizing the need to, you know, hold the course and, and do the things that they've been taught to do by their counselors and so forth as, in an effort to kind of cope with, with the ongoing structure or the difficulties they're having. One other little snag that we're having is our, our ancillary providers, those are our occupational therapists, our physical therapists, and our speech-language pathologists are finding that their level of engagement with their particular services aren't as robust as they could be. And we attribute this to one thing and one thing only, is as our parents and their, their learners are getting accustomed to the academic demands that are being placed on them and trying to figure out what has been said, that just-right principle. Some of this ancillary, these ancillary services are kind of being pushed to the wayside while, while the parents and their children figure out how best to learn and do the, the core concepts that their teachers are pushing out to them. So our level of engagement in some of those areas is, is lower than, than what I'm comfortable with. But as we talk to those folks and connect with the families, I get the feeling, as they do, that once we kind of find some equilibrium and we find that, that Goldilocks principle that Dr. Howell refers to, I, I think our speech-language services, our OTPT, some of those things will come on board and, and we'll be able to reconnect and reestablish those, those services. But they're, they're not, they're not as robust as they could be, just given the fact that these teachers, the parents are saying, "Gosh, it's all I can do to get through, you know, our core curriculum, let alone the, the speech-language assignment that you, that you put or, or the, the physical therapy assignment that, that you assign." So those things are kind of being pushed to the side while, while our parents are learning how to manage the academic portion of that. Oh, gosh. I guess that's about all I wanted to say. You know, we're, we're, we're finding, just as they are in the, in the gen ed setting, that, that our folks are going above and beyond. We're, I've taken it upon myself to some, some of our, our families who aren't able to get their packets or are unable to communicate that myself and our, our staff here at the Ed Center will go out and deliver these packets ourselves and so forth. And it kind of is humbling to see what folks are up against out there, you know, when they're trying to instruct their children, in particular, children with disabilities, some of the challenges they face. It's, it's humbling to see what, what they're up against and so forth. So I hear nothing but positive things. Our folks are working hard, obviously. They're working hard, as you've heard from the elementary and secondary folks here. But, you know, attitudes are pretty positive, right? They feel real, real committed to this. We do a lot of cheerleading here with our folks, right? Make sure that they're propped up and doing what they can and getting what support they need from us. But outside of the ESY, a little snag in, in finding out a healthy mechanism to, to get our paperwork taken care of in a way that meets eligibility criteria continues to be kind of our snags. But I have no doubt that we'll be fine, yeah. Any questions? I'd love to answer any questions.
Don't hear anything.
Good, okay, thank you.
Thank you, daily dose of Dave.
Yeah.
That's good, three D's. Hi, Chuck.
Good afternoon. I have a few curriculum updates for you and a few professional development updates for you this afternoon. I, too, would just echo a lot of what you've heard already, that, you know, I, I'm in awe of our teachers and how they've really stepped up to this challenge. One example of their commitment that I thought you'd be interested in knowing about is the integrated Math I, II, and III teachers are meeting remotely once a week for about 30 to 45 minutes. And if they, if they're unable to participate in that online meeting with their colleagues, it's recorded, so they can go back and listen to it if, if they weren't able to participate. And the whole purpose is just for them to be able to check in with one another, what's working, what isn't working, and then provide a focus of instruction for the, the coming week. So, you know, it's just a, a real example of, of more together. And I thought you'd be interested in knowing about that. I explained at your, our last meeting that the state board has waived a number of graduation requirements, which you'll address next week at your regularly scheduled meeting. There are two requirements that are still somewhat up in the air because they've, they are not part of state board rule, but rather they're part of statute. And that includes the civics test and the Idaho reading indicator. And the state board has recommended that the governor use his executive authority and waive these requirements. And hopefully, we'll hear on these two items soon, and we'll be able to update you. The only other curriculum update for you today, before I move on to professional development, is that the college board is allowing the AP tests be taken online at home this year. And this information will be communicated to learners through the AP teachers as testing time nears. Regarding professional development, there were several professional development courses that were in progress prior to our closure that will now be completed remotely. And those include our analyzing and embedding the literacy standards in the content area. This is a course for our new secondary teachers. They have one session left, and that, that will be completed via Google Meets. Our G-Suite course, our secondary instructional technology coaches, and then our elementary STEM cohort. So that will be finished up remotely in the next several weeks. Sometimes adversity produces some of our greatest opportunities. And I'd like to share with you one great opportunity that our staff members have currently. I'd like to recognize Kerry Thomas and Kathy Stevens, Cindy White, and Gwen Lloyd, who have put together a variety of professional development modules for our paraprofessionals and teachers, which can be completed remotely by our staff members. I actually emailed these to you earlier today so that you'll be able to see the full variety of training that staff members may take advantage of. Most of the modules can be completed in an hour, sometimes a little bit more. There's a professional development log, which I also emailed to you. That was developed so that staff members can keep track of their time. 15 hours is the equivalent of one credit, which teachers can then use for recertification. I think you'll be impressed when you review the variety of options. There are 12 modules related to behavior, including understanding behavior, making sense of motivation, preventing challenging behavior, one called "Think Before You Speak," "Pause Before You Act," among several others. There are 18 English Language Arts modules, some related to print awareness, others phonics, fluency, vocabulary, spelling, comprehension, writing, assessment, and, and many others. There are four modules on general instruction, including two on explicit instruction, an introduction to using prompts to support skill acquisition and implementing evidence-based instructional practices. And there are six mathematics-related modules, some that include a collection of videos and articles related to a variety of mathematical topics, and several modules on mathematical tasks designed specifically for home use, which is quite timely right now. So like I said, I, I sent the full document to you for you to review at your leisure, as well as the log that staff members can use to log the modules that they complete. So just one example of, of an opportunity that, that came out of adversity. So unless you have any questions?
Thanks, Chuck.
Okay, thanks.
Commendations to Chuck and Gretchen and Kathy, the team, for pulling that together. Because as you can imagine, we were inundated with all of these offers for resources and activities and so forth. And it's just like, how do you sift through that? So that group did a very nice job vetting all of those resources for our staff and putting them into a nice little format for them to take advantage of and to receive that professional development opportunity. Yeah.
Good. Kevin? What all the great ideas do you have today?
Hopefully, no more great ideas today. So just as an update to what technology accomplished last week, we deployed 7,168 Chromebooks in the span of eight hours from Highland High School's parking lot.
In the rain.
In the rain. And that was, that was achieved thanks to the hard work of the technology staff, Sue Pettit and the secondary directors, and the 35 bus drivers that came out and really helped make that whole thing happen. It was, it was impressive to, to see the dedication that people had to getting those Chromebooks out. But during the end, we thought we were gonna, we were, we were almost out. We were down to our last cart. Highland High School does not have a single Chromebook left in it. But we, we got them all checked out. Since then, I was just looking at the numbers. We checked out about another 150, actually at the schools. So we've really got quite a few of our devices out in the hands of our learners. Since then, the help desk has been running since 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM for the last week. We've received over 1,500 calls. And just to put that in perspective, during a normal school startup, we usually receive maybe 400 to 500, right? So I mean, this is a huge uptick in the number of calls. But the technology staff's been handling it great. Everything, the feedback I've gotten has been very positive. People seem very happy that we're there to help. Yeah, those are the big, major things technology's been doing for right now. We're, we're still working on the extended hours. Probably next week, we'll reevaluate whether we want to continue those hours or just shorten them down a little bit. But we've been working through all the Google Meets issues and all the different issues that we've been running into, turning on student emails and getting a million different things functioning for every member of the staff. But that's what we're going to continue to do, continue to support everybody as best we can. So if there are any questions or...
Kevin, will you talk a little bit about what happens in the evenings as well with your technology staff?
Yeah, so the late-night crew, we get less phone calls from 4:00 to 7:00, or 4:00 to 9:00. So what I've been having that staff do is go through and support the teachers in the buildings by fixing their computers or deploying Chromebooks or, I mean, any other myriad of tasks that we've been handling in the evenings. So that's been working great. We've still been able to maintain the same level of support for our staff. It just takes a little bit longer.
These 1,500 calls, mostly staff?
Mostly parents.
Mostly parents.
I would argue, yeah, we, we've gotten quite a few students. Probably about 60% have been parents or students of some kind, needing help with the device or how to log in or how to do something. And, you know, it's been, it's been kind of all over the board with the calls.
Okay, any questions? Hearing none, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now the departments. Department upgrades, Bart, you're first.
Thank you. Excuse me. In your packet, you might recognize a policy that was adopted two or three years ago by the, the Board of Trustees that's entitled "Policies and Guidelines for Federal and State Grant Funds." That document was created to be in compliance when we receive audits, either federal or state audits, and contain, I think, about 70-some-odd pages of, of guidelines and what our policies are in administering our grant funds. our policies are in administering our grant funds. In the event of the emergency closures that have happened across the nation in schools, one of the components that is not found within that document talks to information in regard to emergency school closures. And so on page ten of that document, you'll see Mrs. Johnson has highlighted these areas. There's two additions that we made to that policy. One is employees paid with federal funds and unexpected extraordinary closures, and then an aspect on federal funding. In a nutshell, what those, what that language addresses is how the school district, school district twelve twenty-five, will deal with employees that are funded under state or federal grant funds. And the language basically just states that we will treat all employees the same, that we will treat general fund employees the same as federal and state grant-funded employees. And in the event that, that pay has to be a little bit different, or responsibilities, responsibilities or jobs have to be a little bit different within the context of this emergency closure, that this language authorizes a district to move forward and authorize those federal grant funds the same. So, basically, this, we are asking for the board to just adopt this language in the event that, so in, in relation to what we are doing now with federal and state grant-funded employees. So this just helps us be in line. It helps auditors as they come in know that this is how we're treating federal and state employees, and it's consistent with how we're treating other employees of the district. So, really, it's just verbiage that helps set forth how we would address these types of emergency closures. And I would imagine that every district around the state and around the nation is adopting similar language for this type of, for these types of programs. Any questions? This is an action item for you this afternoon.
An example of these employees. Give me an example.
An example of what?
Bus driver.
Bus drivers really don't fall under state funds. So, for example, let's use Head Start as an example. So we're in emergency closure, we're working different hours, may not be working as many hours on some days as on other days. And so we still have to do a time and effort reporting. We still have to indicate that their responsibilities and their hours are for the Head Start program. And then they get funded as if we were not in any kind of emergency closure, consistent with all of our school district policies with all employees. So as an example.
Makes sense.
Food service workers, the same way our food service department, where they're working a variety of different hours. They get funded through the USDA program because it is a USDA program that we run, and so things of that nature.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. By way of department reports, I won't repeat a lot of the things that may have mentioned a week and a half or two weeks ago when we met with the board. But, you know, there are many, many positive things that happen behind the scenes. And a lot of the operational side of the school district does happen behind the scene, behind the scenes. It's things that we don't, that we don't see very often. But as an example, I just want to highlight a few things. Our maintenance and operations department has been really working nonstop even throughout this closure. We are actually catching up on many work orders that we haven't been able to catch up on throughout the school year. We are actually doing a lot of the work that we would do during the summer and wait for class to end and for students to leave the buildings. We're working on that right now. Lawns are being mowed, water's being turned on, things of that nature. We're cleaning the buildings. The buildings are actually cleaner now than when, than when we went into this emergency closure. And so, there are a lot of things that are, that are going on and taking place there in maintenance and operations. Transportation is a little bit different where there aren't students to transport. You heard Mr. Chatfield talk about the thirty-five bus drivers that helped out up at Highland High School. Happy to report there were no stop arm violations up there at that, at that activity. But, you know, that type of work, and then they will also help maintenance and operation possibly doing some cleaning in the schools when we get ready to do some of our deep cleaning and those things. One of the departments that really shines forth is obviously our food service department. Just wanted to mention a couple of new things there. You know that we do have eight park locations, and from the time that we spoke the last time we did at Idaho Elementary as a school. This is just amazing to me when you think about it. But on average, we have been operating for eleven days in our food service program. Today would actually be twelve. On average, we have served three thousand one hundred and sixty-five meals a day, and that includes lunch and breakfast. So you could double that number if you wanted to count the total number of meals. Or in a, in a twelve-day period, if you count today, we'll be probably close to four thousand meals today. I would imagine we'll have served over seventy thousand meals, both lunch and breakfast. So that's a pretty amazing contribution in our community to help feed children from the age of eighteen and under, and to help deal with that type of essential community need that we have here in Pocatello and Chelwick area. So with that, unless there's any questions, we haven't heard anything new on the governor's holdback, other than we know the one percent this year. We're still awaiting the news. We're not really waiting very favorably, but we know that more is to come in regard to potential recession and the governor's holdback for next year. But we don't really have any updated numbers in relation to that at this point in time. So, we'll share that as we learn more.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Insurance. Carl?
I believe I'm the next one on the list there.
You are.
You know, through all this, we still have to go forward with everything we're doing. So, we're preparing for next year. One of those things we're preparing for, of course, is our medical plan or our insurance package. I shouldn't include all of them. We were able to meet yesterday, and Mr. Mattson, you were there with us. We have been back and forth with our carriers to try to get an insurance package in place. And when we met with Lockton and then the, our medical carrier back in January, we were anticipating less than ten percent. And I think you were able to sit there most of the day with us. Ultimately, it came back somewhere between two and six percent. And we heard a couple of weeks ago that looked like it maybe is going to be between eight and nine percent. And so, in the meantime, we went back and asked them to sharpen their pencil, they meaning Pacific Source. And during the last week, we were able to come into a renewal of three point six percent, which is six percent less our two point four percent premium back reduction because of our wellness program. And so, we met yesterday, and I think we're going to bring next week a recommendation that we take the three point six percent increase on our medical plan, three percent on the top end for our dental plan. They're going to come back, Lockton has approached Delta Dental to sharpen their pencil and see if there's any way they can reduce the cost there. With the three point six percent increase, it'll be about three hundred and thirteen thousand dollar increase to our general fund. The three percent for the dental will be about twelve thousand five hundred dollars approximately. So, with any increase, of course, it takes a hit to our general fund. We had this conversation yesterday about what happens if we have a holdback next year, or we're going to be able to afford it. And we did have some options on increasing the deductible again, which is usually the case when you have to deal with medical insurance to lower the cost. You have to increase the deductible. And one of those was a five hundred dollar deductible increase, and it would have saved about two hundred thousand dollars. Ultimately, we decided, and I think we are going to pass this along, is that, you know, we had a number of employees who do not participate in our wellness plan to probably the maximum of their abilities. And by virtue of them not participating, it probably costs us about that same hundred, two hundred thousand dollars. And so we're going to try to incentivize that group of employees a little bit more to participate and hopefully increase...
How about just communicate with them?
What's that?
Communicate with every one of them.
Yeah.
Those benchmarks weren't that high that I saw yesterday, and I figured we left a hundred and forty, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars on the table. You know, in my, in my old world, that wouldn't happen, you know, a hundred percent participation. And it has to come down to communicating with every person here.
Exactly.
And every, every one of those benchmarks, milestones, whatever, those are free.
And they're all very, very doable.
And they're very doable, and that's where we lost a hundred and forty thousand? No, that's not right. It's not right. So, you've got a plan to...
So we have plans in place to try to address those. And I actually thought this morning, this is really going outside the box, but I guess anyway. You know, we have, we talked about increasing that, that, that share of the employee premium. We have employees who've been doing that for two, three, four, five years in a row. Maybe we need to probably ratchet it up every year that they don't participate. And so that was a thought that I had, and I want to probably share that with the committee as, probably as the week progresses. So if three years out and they haven't participated, and of course, we saw what that not participating would do to our, our premium reduction, maybe instead of being what it is the first year, we'll ratchet up thirty dollars a year and max it out, you know, at some point. So anyway, that was a thought I had as I was not sleeping in the middle of the night, you know, how it is. And so, anyway, we will be back next week. We, I need to throw this in as well. We had the conversation with our association representative who was present yesterday, that she needs to go back and have this conversation with the association, see if they would approve that, that plan that we have in place. In the meantime, yesterday, we got a letter from the Idaho School Boards Association and Idaho Education, a co-written letter, talking about trying to avoid discussing things in a negotiation manner that affected finances. And I asked her to maybe still address it with her board, and we need to get on this quicker, sooner than later. And so, I'm hoping that we can have that resolved with their group this week so we can bring it back next week as a, as a co, co...
With them, so.
Yeah, I'm trying to see, figure out a word for that, but between the two of us, we give an approval for that plan. And so, she said that they would do that this week. And so, we will hopefully have that for you on the agenda for next, next Tuesday's board meeting for approval.
Okay.
Any question from any of you?
The group?
All right.
No, you're free.
I'm the fortunate one who gets to also share some more exciting news that our classified personnel have been doing since we started this soft closure. A lot of the things have been mentioned, but the real humbling piece for me is, last night before I left, I sent out an email and asked our principals if they would send me just one statement about what their classified paraprofessionals, lunch workers, anyone, food service, transportation, maintenance and operation, any of those people have done. In that short amount of time, I have four pages of comments from our principals and heads of departments talking about singing the praises of all the things that are happening. So, not to reiterate, a lot of the same things that were said, but I just want to kind of start from our youngest learners, which are at the Lincoln Center, and move all the way through our departments just real quickly, just a couple of highlights. So, for example, at the Lincoln Center, one of the main components that they're working on is looking at training and looking at being able to use the State Department Special Ed Paraprofessional Handbook and kind of sharpen their skills in the professional development realm, so that when their, when their learners return, that they'll have some added skills to work with their students. One of the main things that you see across elementary and secondary is the development of these packets. And so just kind of an explanation, a little bit of how that has been working in most arenas, is that those packets are put together on Fridays and picked up on Mondays. Their hours may look different, but the amount of time and effort that's put into putting those packets together, when you think about it, it's everything from copying the packets to handing out the packets, to making sure that the manipulatives are there. So sometimes they're building those manipulatives so that they're not taking the supplies that are already at the school, because as we know, this will pass, and we will be back in session, and we still need the supplies to continue on. And handing out those packets can look, everything from the people coming to the school, to having people go out in teams to deliver those packets to their homes. And another thing that's happening that's delivering with those packets is we have some schools that are delivering their food backpacks as well, and just continuing to help and assist with the curriculum adaptations. What I've seen that came through here loud and clear in all of these is the fact that everybody's pitching in, even if it's maybe not their area. For example, a lot of our paraprofessionals are looking at modifying curriculum for our special needs students, and how excited they are to get to look at and do something different. And so that's been, that's been a real plus. Just another example that I wanted to share is at one of our schools, that the star coach, which is the person that works with the behavior component in the elementary schools, that this star coach is sending home a weekly newsletter to her groups of students to provide support for their parents and for her learners. I thought that was a really great way to use their resources. Another one of our elementary schools is looking at doing a book study. So their paraprofessionals are working on that Framework for Understanding Poverty from Eric Jensen, and using it in that respect. This one made me smile. It said that as families came in to search for their learner's belongings, such as shoes, coats, et cetera, the ER paras have said, "We'll do whatever it takes." And this administrator said, "Only saints would volunteer to bag up middle school lockers." And as we continued through, everything from library collections to passing out the pamphlets to Century High School, the struggling learners, they're offering tutoring opportunities. And so, I think you can see through this that their tasks are great, and their appreciation from their administrators is immense, that they feel like that this remote learning would not happen without our classified staff. And that goes along with transportation. One of the pieces that I found really important that, when I heard from transportation that they're doing, is they're looking at changing up some of their routes to make more safe routes for some of our drop-offs that have high numbers of students that get off. For example, the one that comes to mind for me, coming from Wilcox, is Quinn Road. They have a couple of their stops upwards of thirty-five to fifty learners that get off the bus at one stop. So transportation is looking at changing those stops, so the bus drivers are going out and timing those routes, and looking at opportunities for safety for our learners when we return. And so the, just the one I want to end with is food service. I echo Bart's words when he says that they have just done remarkable things, and it talks about here that they have tried to make this a fun time. And Tom Wilson, he talks about how they have, sometimes the mask could be scary. So, a lot of our food service people have decorated their masks. I know there was pictures on Facebook that at Easter, they had ears on, and that they were trying to make this opportunity special for kids. And so, he talks about that, one of, at one of the sites, some of the parents mentioned when it's their birthday and they sing "Happy Birthday" to them, and in a time where you don't see many people, other than maybe your mom telling you "Happy Birthday," how important that is for our learners. So, it's just been really remarkable. And then along those same routes in human resources, we have to support our learners, but we have to support our staff too, and how important it is, because it is a stressful time. And so we have sent out information to continue our E A P program and in making contact with them, that there still is teletherapy assistance if they need it, and making sure that they understand that. The other piece that comes up quite often is making sure that any communication that deals with attendance or questions that staff members may have regarding COVID-19 and some of the different programs that are out there. For example, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, and wondering if they qualify, that we run all of those questions through the Human Resources Office so that we get the same answer and that we keep consistent, and how important that is for our staff to know that we're there to support them and to answer any questions that they may have. Thank you. Questions?
Hi Jackie. I have a question.
Hi Jackie.
As far as human resource activity goes, you know, are we having, are getting much input about teacher retention or next year or experiments or recommendations, or are you seeing much of any of that kind of activity yet? All of this going on?
That's a great question. As far as having an influx of retirement letters or any of those things, we haven't seen that. But, um, again, we're, you know, we're kind of holding steady when it comes to looking at our funding and where that may fall when it comes to career ladder and those types of things. And we may have a change in that as we look to, towards the future. And, uh, but as for now, we haven't had a real, um, increase in letters of resignation since this has started. In fact, if I were to think about it, I would think that I have only received probably three, if I were to look at three in the last three weeks.
It doesn't seem to be like that.
That's right. You're exactly right. Any other questions?
Thank you Brenda. Superintendent, are you gonna lead this?
Okay, I'm gonna start off and then we'll have a couple others with recommendations as well. As you are all well aware, the State Board of Education, uh, last week, uh, put into place a, uh, soft closure until the end of the school year. And so then there was some question about reopening and what that possibility may look like for some of the areas that are less affected or seem to be unaffected by this, uh, this nasty virus. And so there are a number of communities that are interested perhaps in reopening. And, uh, so the State Board was supposed to meet, well, they did meet yesterday, but take action on what, um, reopening would look like in regard to recommendations or criteria set by the Public Health Department for the state or the region. And so, uh, they did not have those recommendations or criteria prepared yesterday. I think they may be waiting to hear what the governor has to say in his address tomorrow, and then they will meet or reconvene on Thursday. However, in anticipation of that, we had already scheduled this meeting and we have had much discussion, uh, about this topic in, uh, the administrative level. And so we, uh, a- as a group felt it's important to make some decisions moving forward. And so we are going to recommend to the board today to, uh, go ahead and put into place the soft closure until the end of the school year. Now with that, you've heard a number of, um, good things happening today in regard to our remote learning. You've heard a couple of challenges that we have yet to work out and to refine just a little bit more. We know that that social connectivity piece is very important, but I think it's important not only for our students, but for our staff and for our community and our, our, just people generally. And so, um, you know, if something were to change in regard to the governor's stay-at-home order, uh, certainly that would not prohibit perhaps, um, opportunities for, uh, if it was lifted or to some degree lifted, opportunities for learners to get together, to collaborate, uh, to, um, have more personal contact. But as far as the school goes, we know that already our teachers are preparing packets of information. They're preparing their online instruction. They have those hours that are set aside for the distance learning, uh, or remote learning. And so, uh, just if we were to come back, that would add a third dimension of face-to-face learning. So our teachers would be preparing essentially three learning delivery methods or systems. And so that's just maybe a little bit too much to ask because I, I think as this continues to, um, evolve or hopefully decrease or diminish over time, there will still be a number of folks that may not be comfortable in sending their kids back to school, even though we may make some assurances with our, our safety and our sanitation and, um, and cleaning. Um, that, there we, you know, just some folks have a different level of comfort. And that could be our staff as well as parents and students. And so we feel that the least disruptive path at this point in time would be to maintain the soft closure. I, I looked at it today. It's not normally in my nature to count the number of days to the end of the school year, but, uh, it looks to be about 31 days that, uh, we would be saying, you know, moving forward with the soft closure recommendation. Our teachers have prepared well. We continue to refine the process. As you again heard today, there will be a number of, um, opportunities for growth that come from this. But, um, just for safety and, uh, and where we're at, we think it would be best for, uh, to maintain some stability for our students and our staff. And I would like to just read you, uh, uh, we, Courtney reached out to Maggie Mann, who is our, one of our regional, uh, directors in public health, and just asked her about, um, the district moving forward with this soft closure recommendation to the board. And Maggie said, "In the interest of continuing to keep the incidence of COVID-19 cases low in the Pocatello-Chubbeck area, Southeastern Idaho Public Health recommends and supports PSCD, or excuse me, PCSD 25 continuation of remote learning for the remainder of this school year. We recognize this situation presents challenges for learners, families, and teachers, but we believe it is in the, it is the healthiest and safest option for the long run." And with that too, I also had an opportunity to visit with, um, Marianne McGory, PEA president, last night and talked to her a little bit about this and what our recommendation would be and what she would like to see as far as the recommendation from the Local Education Association from the PEA. And she just said, "If you'll pass on that it's the safest and wisest decision." And so that's what she wanted me to share with you as well.
Yeah.
So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to address those now. This would be an action item for you just, uh, a little bit later in the agenda.
This is Jackie and I, I noticed on the news last night in New York, they were talking about their situation there and, and the rather large number of teachers who got contracted, you know, this virus. And I thought, you know, it, it, it just in the interest of safety of our teachers, not just our students, you know, but of our teachers too. I was, I was concerned there, you know, when they, I realized, you know, New York is a bigger city and the most hard-hit area, but it's just like to show that the risk that we put people in sometimes, you know, so.
Yes, that's, and that's my part of this meeting.
Okay. Graduation recommendations.
So, um, we are going to come with a recommendation for a graduation, um, but we think it's premature. So we are going to ask that the board wait for a couple of weeks to make a decision about whether to continue with traditional graduation or an alternative graduation, um, celebration of some kind. Um, I will tell you that the, um, principals and we're going to be reaching out to our student body leadership, um, and Courtney and myself and whoever else needs to be on it, will be, um, discussing what kind of alternative graduation celebrations we could have, um, if we can't go through with our traditional celebration. But that is six weeks away still. And three weeks ago, we closed school and who knows what's going to be happening three weeks from now. So we would ask that the board postpone a decision on graduation until a later date, um, around the first of May.
First of May, okay.
Okay.
So you didn't have to go off through this, right?
Mm-hmm.
Table it.
Right.
Hi. So due to having a one-week year old in my household, I'm going to extreme measures to stay safe. So I'm not sick, so that's good. Um, a couple of things, uh, similar to, uh, Mr. Howell's statement that IHSAA was supposed to meet this morning and make some decisions. But again, they, yesterday afternoon, about one o'clock, decided they were gonna postpone that and wait till Friday after the State School Board made a decision. So everybody's in this waiting game, which I'm learning to be very flexible.
Brenda, what was your line yesterday about a Band-Aid or scab or something?
I said, "Everyone's afraid to rip the Band-Aid off."
Yes, they're waiting for the governor. Yeah.
Very afraid. And then, you know, talking to Mr. Ty Jones and so forth, there, there are sub-schools that have ripped the Band-Aid off. Um, right now, he said there's about eight to 10 schools. But, um, I would like to make the recommendation for the board to, um, follow IHSA recommendations on Friday. Um, and if that is to suspend spring sports for the rest of the year, that we would get those participation fees back into those families' pockets as soon as possible. So that would be my recommendation for today. And just to kind of update you on a few things that are going on, uh, Cheer and Dance should have started tryouts this last week. And so they've gone to great measures in creating a virtual, if you will, tryout system. Um, they're very aware of if there's, uh, athletes that are not available with Zoom or Google Meets and so forth, to be very flexible, to have a date later and an opportunity later in the, the summer or the school year, whatever that we see fit when we, when this, um, gets lifted off of us. So right now, we are going to move forward to having, uh, cheer and dance practices and tryouts through virtual, um, programs and so forth. Uh, we've put a lot of thought and, and understanding into our athletes to, we need to move forward in the sense that we need to buy uniforms soon and we need to do, talk about camps and so forth. Um, and to just be as flexible as possible with our students and keeping them up and going. I know we had to cancel our free physicals in May as well, just because of the healthcare system not being able to be able to provide that, that mass group setting. So we're gonna postpone that hopefully till August and see if we can pull it off in August. Um, so those are just kind of updates. And I just wanna, you know, share that student government, students and everybody else are doing great things of keeping that connection and, and making sure that everybody's feeling like there's still a community school out there, just virtual. Any questions for me?
Not really, but when can we meet again? Is, is it on May 1st also?
So this one, with the recommendation, uh, Mr. Chairman, would be that we follow the recommendations of IHSA.
On Friday. So they should be hopefully making a rec, hopefully making a recommendation to us on Friday. And if that recommendation is to suspend spring sports, that we would follow suit.
And if there was an opportunity for some playoffs, I don't know how they would seed that. We wouldn't know how many teams would even still be in the running, so to speak, yeah, that would be competing. But we would do our best to field those teams if there was that possibility.
Okay. Thank you.
This is Jackie. And I, I, again, I'm a little concerned of, um, recommending that we follow whatever their recommendation is when we don't have any idea what it might be.
Okay.
Could.
I, I just don't know if I feel real comfortable.
Can we just hold it, hold it off?
You bet.
Yes, I was told that one. I don't even know what they might do, you know, so.
Right.
That's my question. I just think that, that's a little scary to.
And the, and I think Jackie, the only reason that I was trying to do this was to try to get those participa- participation fees back into families' hands as soon as possible. But you're right, if they do make an alternative recommendation, we definitely need to probably look at that a little bit more. So I am okay if we want to wait.
Let's table it.
And I, I appreciate, you know, your wanting to leave that consideration. And I, I think that would be great. I still just am a little concerned about finding out on something I'm not sure what it's.
That's understandable, absolutely. And so we have our regular meeting on Tuesday. If we need to do something before that, maybe we can get the board together on Monday if it looks like it's moving forward. So we'll, um, I'll have Ms. Johnson get with you if it looks like we need to come back and make a decision on that before Tuesday. Otherwise, we'll just put it on Tuesday's agenda. And I think we're going to try to meet a little earlier on Tuesday anyway, rather than our 5:30.
As long as everybody is good with that. If you want to, just send me an email and let me know the time that might work for you, um, earlier than 5:30.
I'll be here at eight. Gets me out of the house.
Well, I'm, I'm pretty, like, I'm pretty available all day.
Okay.
Okay, and Tues- okay, and Tuesday night will be, or even afternoon, whatever we decide, uh, will just be action items. And that's why we gave you a lot of detail on the reports today. So it should be a fairly quick meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No tears though.
No.
Uh, it's time for public comment. Carl, are you the public? Wants to speak?
Well, I can comment already.
Okay, all right. All right. So I haven't received any, so we'll move on, uh, to the action items. Everyone here, are you okay, hopefully? Uh, the first item for action is, uh, I would entertain a motion to consider approving a soft closure for the remainder of the 2019-20 school year. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve this soft closure, uh, till the end of the school year for the 2019, 2021?
Nineteen twenty.
Nineteen twenty.
Nineteen twenty, yeah, truly, yeah.
I'll second that.
I'll second, okay. Any discussion? Hearing on, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ooh, I better ask. Uh, are there any opposed? Nope, so we're all in favor. Uh, that motion is passed. Uh, we're gonna table the next two items for different dates, different reasons, correct? Oh. Uh, the next two items, I'm, I've been asked to ask you to, um, table, from motion to table these next two items.
What are those items?
Uh, the first one was graduation recommendations and the second one was the IHSA recommendation.
I move that we table both, both of those.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's passed. The last item, uh, finally, we will consider adopting the policies and guidelines for the federal state funds as presented. Is there a motion?